Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Flanders.
Here.
Vice Chair Moody. Commissioner Goins.
Present.
Commissioner Trusdale.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Sladman.
Present.
Commissioner Bona.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and the review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any question, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a good, smooth meeting. Thank you very much on that. Going on now to item number four. This is public comment. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Seeing none, I'll move on now to item number five. Okay, and looking at to approve the final minutes for the Planning Commission meeting of April 8th, 2014. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes of the April 8th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Goins. Please vote. The motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of April 8th, 2014 is approved. Let's go on now to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, the following items have been requested to be held in abeyance to the June 10th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Items 20 through 22, MOD 53701, VAR 53502, and SDR 53503. The following items have been requested to be withdrawn without prejudice. Item number 36, SDR 53485. And the following item has been requested to be stricken. Item number 9, VAR 53536. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who'd like to be heard on any of these items? Seeing none, I will close the public portion, uh, public comment portion, and open it up for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the housekeeping items as read into record by staff.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion to approve the housekeeping items carries. Now move on now to the consent items of the agenda. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or an applicant so desires. We will be looking at items 7 and number 8 on the consent agenda. Does any commissioner or an applicant wish to be heard on any of those two items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent items.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve Consent Items 7 and 8, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve Items Number 7 and 8 on the consent agenda carries.
Mr. Chairman, Items Number 7 and 8 are final action in the absence of an appeal within seven days.
We'll now move on to the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application remended but recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. We'll start with item number 10, which is SUP 53174. The applicant is Donald Ritz. The owner is Burns Family LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer/wine/coolers on-sale establishment use within an existing 1,495 square-foot restaurant at 4864 West Sloan Mountain Road in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 11 is SUP 53399. The applicant is SF Markets LLC. The owner is Sahara Center LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer/wine cooler off-sale establishment within a proposed 26,907 square-foot general retail store other than listed at 10,000 West Sahara Avenue, Suite 180 in Ward 2, Councilman Beers. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 12 is SUP 53414. The applicant is Rockin' Noodles Owner Third and Charleston LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 688 square-foot tavern limited establishment use with a 30-square-foot outside seating area at 1108 South Third Street in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 13, which is SUP 53436. The applicant is Mariscos El Puerto Inc. The owner is Lake Mead Decatur LLP. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a beer/wine cooler on-sale establishment within a proposed 2,632 square-foot restaurant with 434 square feet of outdoor seating area at 1901 North Decatur Boulevard in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of these items? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion. Do any of the members of the commission wish to be heard?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain from item 12, as much as I own property within the notice area.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, before, I just want to make a disclosure on item number 12. Rockin' Noodles, they're going for a tavern limited, however, it's in conjunction with Mills on Urban Lounge in the Arts District. However, I don't feel this is in conflict with, or competition with my business, and so therefore I will be voting on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goins, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve one motion, one vote. Items 10, 11, 12, and 13 let the record reflect Commissioner Trusdale abstaining on item number 12, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve Items 10, 11, 12, and 13 carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Trusdale on item number 12.
Mr. Chairman, please note that Items Number 10, 11, and 12 are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days. Item Number 13 has been requested to go forward to the June 18th City Council meeting.
Thank you, Director. We're going to pull item Number 40 forward on the public hearing items, and that's, item Number 40 is DIR 53631. Applicant owner is City of Las Vegas. For a presentation on the 2014 Smart Growth Sprawl Report results, staff has no recommendation. Sir, if you'll state your name and address, please.
Michael Howell, Las Vegas Planning Department.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'd like to take a few minutes of your time, commissioners, staff, public, to give a quick recap on the 2014 Smart Growth Sprawl Report. Basically, the first study of the sprawl report was released in 2002, and it was underwritten by the EPA to look at the correlation between development patterns and environmental impacts such as air quality, quality of life. There we go. This study is authored by Reed Ewing, professor at the University of Utah at the Metropolitan Research Center. And the product of this study is it develops an index to compare development patterns with health and well-being factors. Basically, the findings found that people in compact and connected cities tend to live three years longer and weigh four pounds less than those who live in sprawling communities. The counties with less sprawl have fewer fatal car crashes. More compact and connected areas provide more economic mobility, basically meaning that children can break free from the cycle poverty that are born in poor communities. And combined costs of housing and transportation decrease with the increase in an index score. So overall, the score, or the sprawl index, is a composite of four scores, and I'll go into detail of how those measurements are comprised. First, you have the development density score, land use mix score, activity centering score, and street accessibility score. The results from the 2002 study, to give a comparison of where we're at 12 years ago with the first study, if you look at the scorings, it's, 100 is a normal indicator. Being less than 100, you're falling below the average. Over 100, you're doing well. So in 2002, the Las Vegas metropolitan statistical area had a density score of 110, land use mix score of 80, activity centering score of 99.8, street accessibility of 108.8, with an overall score of 104.7. Las Vegas, as a region, ranked 36 out of 101 other regions that were rated in this For the 2014 report, you see the increase overall of the scores. Density increases 142.12, land use 105.5, activity to 114.29, street accessibility to 121.2, with an overall score of 121.2. We improved the 16 and 1/2 points, but if you see, we ranked 39 out of 221 regions, which actually gives us a ranking in the top 20%. In comparison, this puts us just behind the Los Angeles region, ranked at 21, but it puts us ahead of Denver at 92, Salt Lake City at 94, Albuquerque at 126, and Phoenix at 173. For reference, New York fared the best, San Francisco was second-best, whereas Atlanta was the worst, or most sprawling. Now, the components of these scores of what's being measured, you have the development density, and what that's made up of, it's total density of urban and suburban census tracts. A key component of this study is that it's based on census tracts and metropolitan statistical areas so that they can make a normalized comparison across the country, so that they can keep apples to apples with all the regions. Percentage of populations in low-density areas and in medium-to-high-density areas, urban density within total built-upon land, relative concentration of density around the center of the metropolitan statistical area, and then employment density. What a component scoring is land use mix. This is the balance of jobs, the total population, the mix of jobs within one mile of a census block group, and the walk score of the center of each census tract. Now, to visualize this, to see what the score looks like map-wise, we have a 2013 map of the current Las Vegas Valley density. And if you pay heed to the red outline, that's the city of Las Vegas limits. And within that outline, you can kind of see where the points of town center, downtown, and the area between Lake Mead, Washington, Rainbow, and Decatur have the clusters of density. And then you overlay that with the land use. This is 2013 land use map. You'll want to pay heed to the colors of yellow and olive being the lower density, and areas with yellow and the brown being medium density, and then the pink and red being commercial. The key thing is that you see that we have a fairly good mix of uses. We don't have, with sprawling communities, would see the larger patches of the lighter yellow, with the exception of some of the county island area that is desert rural. Now, the next scoring, activity centering, that's based on the range of population and employment size in different census block groups, the density decline rate from the center of the metropolitan statistical area outwards, and the proportion of jobs to people within the MSA's Central Business District and other employment centers. So the best way to think of activity centering is it's pretty much, it's the clustering of urban activity. Its companion score, that kind of goes hand-in-hand, the street accessibility, which is based on average block length, average block size, percentage of urban-sized blocks that are less than six acres. For reference, a downtown block is about 2 and 3/4 acre, the density of street intersections, and the percentage of four-way or more intersections. So to visualize these two components, so that you can see how we're doing, you have the small graphic, it's an urban development pattern, and that's based on a one-square-mile area of the downtown Centennial Plan area, basically centered on Maryland and Lewis Street. You can see it's a highly supportive connectivity ratio of 1.85, and a walk score of 77, making it very walkable. Adjacent to that, you have the traditional suburban development pattern. This is the John S. Park Hunt Ridge area. You can see larger block size, fewer intersections, but it does give a moderately supportive connectivity ratio of 1.55, with a walk score of 66, which is still remaining somewhat walkable. In contrast, we have the conventional suburban development pattern that we see around the valley, which we find in Mountains Edge. It's non-supportive connectivity ratio of 1.22, and a walk score of 8. Now, these three development patterns pay heed to that connectivity ratio. So we're looking at what has the city of Las Vegas done effectively to contribute to our increased score, our good faring on this recent report? And we have specifically within the last 12 years, the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan. We have the community design element. We have the Title 19 Unified Development Code. Within that, community design element is basically a calling for transit-oriented development, establishment of form-based codes, and the establishment of guidelines for sustainable infill and new development through resource management. And within the Title 19, we codify the minimum requirements for walkable communities with those connectivity ratios. Mixed-use regulations are in that also provide streamlined requirements for that keystone urban species known as the ground retail, which we're seeing develop slowly. To go into that connectivity, this is a real component of what helps contribute to a, an effective connected community. The connectivity rates, the efficiency of a network by dividing the links, pathways, to nodes, intersections, and terminations. So we have here is a cul-de-sac, a dumbbell, 17 lots. This cul-de-sac subdivision has a connectivity ratio of 1.0. You see the three points, there's three nodes, three black lines, three paths. With a minor improvement, you lose a lot, but you provide an opening. You now come to that Unified Development Code requirement of 1.3. And just two pedestrian openings brings you to 1.5. You're now exceeding the code, not really too difficult, and contributes greatly to many of the factors that are calculated in the sprawl result, or the sprawl report. So I would say that any developer that's arguing that connectivity requirements are not feasible, or asking you to accept a poorly-designed development with consequences that outlast what the initial gains are for that community. Another component of this sprawl report deals with the density. We look to medium-density residential, not just high-density towers, to increase overall density gains. 26%, of the general plan amendments approved in the past 12 years have consisted of medium-low density or greater at a minimum density of 8.49 units. Now, that number's important, just in terms of number-wise, is that medium-low land use gives you that key number of the 12,500 residents per square mile. And that number is what supports transit, which is required of the transit-oriented So how do we continue to deter sprawl? Well, we have currently our walkability plans. Transit-oriented development was called out in the community design element. We have our partnership with the Southern Nevada Strong Partnership. Specifically, we're looking at projects within the Maryland Parkway Corridor and the Las Vegas Medical District. We have the form-based code development currently in the works for downtown. And we have the master plan update. Specifically, the form-based code opens a door to design-based responses for higher-density areas, and the master plan update will allow us to refocus our planning efforts so that we can make necessary changes from the past 14 years of the previous plan. Now, this next slide is just a quick capture of, I believe, what we've done right in the past 12 years. And this does cover the town center area that has had some discussion of, you know, how effective of a plan is it? I think when you see these slides, it does have some value in seeing what planning does. So this area is centered on Elkhorn and Durango. As you can see, we have, we're starting with Mountain Ridge Park and a dirt road coming down the center known as Durango Drive. In 2004, we've added 204 lots of a community desert canyon, single-family development. In 2006, we now have Montecito Town Center, Sandra Lee Thompson Elementary School, and Town Center Plaza, basically center of the screen. By 2008, we have Centennial Hills Hospital, second component of Town Center Plaza, and the largest completion of single-family development, over 700 units. And by 2010, we now have Grand Montecito Parkway, Lamp Light Village mixed-use development up in the upper left-hand corner, and the Winding Trails Park, Fire Station Number 48, more single-family development, the RTC Park and Ride in the center of the image. And by 2012, we have 260 units added from that Lamp Light Village. To 2014, currently, we're, recently, we've had the hospital expansion and more completion of the commercial along Durango. So overall, within the town center area, we've provided shorter commuter times, it's becoming more bikeable, has good density and land use mix, but there's still some components that could be worked on, and it's mainly walkability. That goes back to that key theme of the connectivity really contributes and has multiple gains. With connectivity, you have that activity clustering, you have the ability for young, old, disabled to have access to greater community services on a daily basis.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank Mike for bringing that report forward to us, and for Doug and the Long Range team for presenting that information. When people talk about sprawl in Las Vegas, they also always assume that Las Vegas is the poster child for sprawl. I often hear that at the national conferences that I attend with other planners. But as you can see from this report, I was pleasantly surprised by how we rank nationally against other communities in terms of our sprawl index. I'd just like to reiterate a couple of things. The plans that you all review and approve have helped to contribute to the fact that we aren't as sprawling as we could be, that we have greater connectivity than we could be. Mike mentioned a number of things, including complete streets, our connectivity ratios that have been adopted, walkable community plans, and the transit plans that we're working on here in the Las Vegas Valley. All of those things help to create a community that's more livable, more walkable, more connected. And so, again, I was pleasantly surprised by these results, and just wanted to present that to you here this evening as kind of background for some of the cases that you see as they come through. So, again, we appreciate you listening to this report, and thanks for your time.
Thank you, Director, and thank you, Mr. Howell, for the report. Appreciate it. We're now going to move on now to, I'm going to pull item 18 forward. Item 18 is SDR 53067. The applicant is Citra Real Estate Capital. The owner is City Parkway 5, Inc., et al. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed three building, 318,975 square-foot mixed-use development consisting of assisted-living apartments, senior citizen apartments, general retail and office space with a six-level parking facility, with waivers of Symphony Park building design, service access, and streetscape standards at the southeast corner of City Parkway and Clark Avenue in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this item was held in abeyance at the last Planning Commission meeting to allow the applicant to work with the SPDRC Review Committee in order to finalize the plans. They have submitted their revised plans, a site plan, a landscape plan, elevations, or a ground floor plan to that subcommittee, and they are now complete. Staff follows the SPDRC's recommendation for approval. This project, as proposed, is generally compatible with the surrounding development and uses.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you could state your name and address, please?
Thomas Dribala, 24 Highland Creek Drive, Henderson, Nevada, 89052. Thank you, thank you all for the approval. We appreciate all the support of the Planning Commission. We're extremely excited by getting this project going. Commissioner Trusdale made some nice comments about the eclectic design at the last meeting. We tried to improve that with the landscaping and all the exterior features, and we're looking forward to moving forward.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's a lovely project. Great to have it in Ward 5. With that, I'll move to follow staff's recommendations on SDR 53067. Approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve Item 18 carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Have a good evening. We'll now move on to related items 14, 15, 16, and 17, starting with item Number 14, which is GPA 52116. The applicant is Richmond American Homes. The owner is G Spring LLC. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from RNP, which is Rural Neighborhood Preservation, to ML, which is Medium Low Density Residential, at the southwest corner of Deer Springs Way and Grand Canyon Drive in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Related item Number 15, for possible action on a request for a rezoning from U, undeveloped, RNP Rural Neighborhood Preservation General Plan Designation, to RCL, which is Single-Family Compact Lot. Staff is recommending denial. Related item Number 16 is WVR 52169, for possible action on a request for a waiver to allow two intersections to be offset at 183 feet and 194 feet, where the minimum offset allowed is 220 feet. Staff is recommending denial. Final related item Number 17, which is TMP 52119, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a proposed 63-lot, single-family residential subdivision. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applications before you were previously held in abeyance from the April 8th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting at the request of the applicant for the fourth time. Since the last Planning Commission meeting, the applicant has made a request to amend the general plan amendment and rezoning application to reflect a change in the general plan from Rural Neighborhood Preservation land use designation to a low-density residential land use designation, as well as change the zoning from a U, undeveloped zoning district to an R1, single-family residential district. Consequently, the proposed subdivision has been redesigned and has resulted in a proposed 40-lot, single-family subdivision with two associated street intersection offset waivers. Staff is non-support of the proposed redesign as it creates a street to nowhere or an orphan street. As such, staff recommends denial of the proposed tentative map and associated applications. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Bob Gronhour, 83, 95, West Sunset Road. I'm here representing Richmond American Homes, which is the applicant in this matter. If I could get your attention to the overhead here, I'll explain to you where our property's located in the surrounding area. As I'm showing you on the overhead here, we have approximately a little bit over 10 acres of property, which is on the corner of Deer Springs and Grand Canyon Drive. In the area here, I'll point out, over the last couple of years, of some of the zone changes that have occurred. of some of the zone changes that have occurred, not only in the city of Las Vegas, but also in Clark County itself, that warrants this application. That's before you, compatible with what's already been approved in this area. The first thing that I want to point out is, up in this area here, which is off of Walupi and Darrell, you have a five-acre piece of property that was rezoned in the city of Las Vegas here for R1 zoning for Dr. Horton. And then you had a subsequent zone change in Clark County for an additional five-acre, R1 residential zone change in Clark County, which this property is currently being annexed into the city of Las Vegas. So in this area, you have a residential density, which is similar to what we're asking for in our application when I get there to explain it. In this area here, I also represent Richmond American in this matter within the last year, a year and a half. They came in with, in the Clark County, for zoning, for RD zoning in there, which allows up to three units to the acre. It was master planned for a residential low in rural in this area. We are also in the process of annexing this property into the city of Las Vegas. And the applicant that's on this property today is the builder for this property here, as I'm showing you. Within the last year, we came in representing Ryland Homes in this area here. This is on about seven and a half acres. I think it's very much important to point out to you, this was a part of the commercial shopping center that was previously approved for planned development in this area. We took out the seven and a half acres here. Ryland came in with about a density of about seven units to the acre. Typically, the lot sizes were somewhere about 3,700 square feet in this area, which left open the remaining about 15 acres for planned development, commercial, to be built somewhere in the future. The blue area here, you have property that's owned by the BLM and also property owned by Las Vegas Valley Water District in this area. It's my understanding that they also have a reservation on most of this property that's located here, and it's planned for a public facility. And just recently, in this area here, this five acres, as I'm showing you, both you and the city council just recently approved a zone change for Richmond American Home for medium-low-density RCL zoning, which the lot sizes were approximately 6,000 to 6,500-square-foot lots. It was a pretty low-density project in here. But because of the zoning districts and development standards, we had to come in with medium-low-density and RCL zoning. This application was submitted at the same time that this application was submitted, this 10 acres that I'm going to talk about now. As staff has correctly pointed out, we initially came in for a general plan request to change it from rural to medium-low-density, based on our neighborhood meetings, based on our conversations with others. We made some changes to the plan that I'll show you tonight. So instead of asking for medium-low-density, we're here with low-density of what we're proposing for. The zoning itself was previously for RCL. Today, I'm standing before you with the revisions that we made. It's for R1 zoning on the property itself. The waivers all go through fairly quickly in the tentative map itself. But I thought, before I get into the site plan, it was very important to show you the changes in this area that have occurred over the last couple of years with respect to change in vacant land here to similar densities of the density of what we're proposing today. Several months ago, when one of my colleagues, Jennifer Lazovich, came before the Planning Commission to represent this item on behalf of Richmond American, this is the site plan that you saw at the time she gave the presentation. The site plan here has 63 lots. This was under the RCL zoning at that point in time. All access was coming out onto Grand Canyon in this area. And the reason for this is, and you'll see the design of the project, if you're familiar with this piece of property here, you have the west, the east contours run actually from west to east in this area, which it's easier to develop from the standpoint, instead of having the cul-de-sacs coming north and south because of the transition in this area. It's easier to build your drainage. It's easier to engineer your sewer and water and everything else going out to Grand Canyon. Some of the issues that we incurred with the neighbors, and especially to the south of us, one is they didn't want any access onto Echelon Point Drive. And number two, as you can see here, we initially had homes facing out on the Echelon Point. They did not want any access or any traffic in this area. The other issue was the lot sizes itself. The lot sizes were being proposed for about 4,500 square feet on an average, which does not hit the character of the area of what I just explained to you, of what's already been approved in this general vicinity. We did hold the item, or we were told by the Planning Commission to hold the item. We had another revised plan here I'll go through quickly. It was for 56 lots. We played around, lost about seven lots. This is something that was, we were trying to work with the neighbors. We still had some of the homes facing out onto Echelon Point Drive. We played around with different lot sizes, tried buffering and so on. So essentially, what we ended up in trying to appease the neighbors and appease everybody else who's involved in this process is what you have before you today. What you have before you today is a 40-lot subdivision. The density is approximately about 3.95 dwelling units to the acre, which falls well within the character of the area of some of the other projects that I just mentioned to you. The typical lot size is about 7,300 square feet. The, all the lots are above 7,000 square feet, except for four lots, which are approximately 66 to 6800 square feet. Those four lots are the lots that I'm pointing out that are located here in this area. The home sizes itself are going to be anywhere from 2,500 to 3,500 square feet. We're going to be providing a single-story and two-story product for the subdivision. Home prices are going to be anywhere from $330,000 on the base price, all the way up to a base price of $385,000 for the project itself. With respect to some of the staff's comments and concerns, again, we're asking for the waiver of separation between the streets and ingress and egress in this area. It is no different than the previous waivers that we were requesting for. As I mentioned earlier in my presentation, one of the reasons why we're building everything this way out to Grand Canyon, it's twofold. One is from a engineering design standpoint. This is where the contours go, west to east. And it's easier, because otherwise, we'd have to come in and fill the property up, come in, ask for retaining walls, et cetera, if we had to go and change the engineering on the property. But the second reason is, on Echelon Point, neighbors didn't want any access out there or whatsoever on Echelon Point Drive. That being said, we would ask you to approve the application, subject to the if-approved staff's conditions. And I can answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Sir, if you'll come up and state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Peter Janney. I live at 6872 Deer Isle. That's in the subdivision that's to the northeast on the corner of Grand Canyon and Deer Springs. And I've gone to both the community meetings and tried to track this for the last six months. And I would say I'm in support of the lot sizes and the, basically, I look at it as four units per acre, basically, which is very similar to the other property they got approved that's adjacent to our subdivision to the east. I don't know anything about the Echelon Point thing, but I would, it would seem to me that if the road doesn't go anywhere, maybe it ought to be taken out. But that's just a layman's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Janney. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Boner?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm not sure who it's to be addressed to, but the, and the earlier zonings that were done on the, to the north and west of this property, I was under the impression that the Water District owned not only the pieces that are shown in blue on that other map, but I also thought it was this land that we're talking about tonight. My mistake, if that's the case. But my question is, does the Water District have any intention to use that land? Is it BLM land and/or the Water District? Are there plans specifically by the Water District to put it to use? And how does that relate to circulation that's related to this particular case?
I'll take that. This is Bart Anderson with Public Works. We have spoken with the Water District. They have a lease. The blue area, the Z-shaped blue area, is BLM property. But the Water District has a lease over the 15 acres that are immediately adjacent to the light green-colored parcel that the Water District owns outright. They have expressed an intention to develop that into some sort of a facility, either a reservoir or a wellsite or pump facility, some sort of facility. They haven't got a specific plan yet. But their lease only encompasses the five, or the three five-acre pieces immediately surrounding the green, which leaves the five-acre piece to the east as a potentially remnant parcel when they do claim that lease.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Any other, Commissioner Schlobman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Another question for Mr. Anderson. What remnant piece? The light green piece on the?
No, the light green is owned outright by the Water District right now. And then the, the Z shape, immediately abutting that light green, they have a lease over. But the kind of easternmost tail of the Z, they do not. So when they claim that lease, which, again, they've expressed an intention to do, that will leave that easternmost part of the Z as a remnant.
Mr. Chairman, just a few comments. The, I mean, the area to the east is approved at 3.59 acres. This is 3.95 dwelling units per acre. It's very similar to a lot of the things that we've been approving around this area. I do understand the grating patterns and how that, how that works with, I think, somewhere around 20-foot of fall from one side of that property to the other. If we, if we went out to either Echelon or Deer Springs, I mean, basically, we'd have a massive wall built up on either one side of the project or the other, just from quickly looking at the backup data. But can't remember if I read in a staff report or where, but the street echelon basically would be an orphaned street, where it's basically a street leading to nowhere. It'd be leading to that Water District property. However, they have, if I can get back to that other slide, they would either be able to access it off of Deer Springs by either continuing Deer Springs or off of the frontage road off of, what is that, 21595? I'm not familiar with what that, what's on. So, I mean, if this goes to city council, I would encourage Mr. Groenhauer to look at that and talk to the neighbors and see if that's possibly something that they would want to vacate, because there's no sense in having a street there that is leading nowhere, that the city will end up having to maintain. So I would make that recommendation that you investigate that before it goes to city council.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard on this matter? Commissioner Quinn?
I just, we've seen this project over and over, Mr. Groenhauer, and I think anything that can be done has been done. And I really appreciate those two little lots that were chopped in half at the far back that are now one size. And if there are no more comments, I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please do.
Thank you. Regarding item number 14, abeyance GPA 52116, my motion is for approval, offering all of staff's recommendations to you, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item 14 carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to note that that's approval for low-density general plan land use.
Certainly. Thank you. And the record has that.
Moving on to item number 15, which is another abeyance, a zoning of 52117. My motion is for approval, following all of staff's recommendations as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item 15 carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, noting, noting that that approval is for R1 zoning.
Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to item number 16, which was also an abeyance, the waiver 52169. My motion would be also for approval, Mr. Groenhauer, following all of staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item 16 carries.
Thank you. And lastly is number 17, abeyance TMP 52119, a motion for approval, following all of staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, forgot to vote. There you go.
Motion to approve item number 17 carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Mr. Chairman, please note that these items will go forward to the June 18 city council meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 19, which is GPA 53501. Applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request to adopt an updated public facilities and building element and revise the Las Vegas 2020 master plan accordingly. This affects all wards, and staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this is an update of our public facilities and service element. The public facilities and service element is a guide for funding decisions for future infrastructure, public buildings, and school facilities. This public facilities and service element consolidated formerly the existing economic, public facilities, public building, and school facility elements in accordance with NRS 278.160, which reduces the number of elements we have to our master plan, and we've continued to consolidate those. It's also in conjunction with the population element as it fulfills the requirements of state law as stated in NRS 278. The Las Vegas 2020 master plan contains numerous goals, objectives, and policies pertaining to the public facilities and buildings element. The public facility element links the broad policies of the master plan to provide direction in regard to infrastructure, public buildings, and schools. We've had some major accomplishments since the last plan update. We've had a north and south environmental enhancement areas to the Florida Land Park. We're completed in 2012 with providing a storage, storage area for floodwater of 567-acre feet, while also providing trails, picnic areas, and other recreational opportunities around that detention basin. Also, we've continued our National Flood Insurance Program Class 5 certification, which gives the city residents lower flood insurance, making us number, only 12 communities out of 22,000 have this high rating. We've had a completion of the new city hall and upgrades the Development Service Center. We've constructed four new fire stations, including Fire Station Number 6 in partnership with the College of Southern Nevada. We continue the implementation of the city's sustainability initiatives for public buildings. Since 2010, the city has reduced energy consumption by 15%, saved 400 million gallons of water, and saved more than 9.6 million in energy costs. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to address those. I also note that you did receive some additional appendices that weren't ready at the time of publication as part of your blue sheet backup for your review and enjoyment.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Schlobman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Question for director, staff, and reading through this report, which is 150, 250 pages that Fred Solis did a wonderful job in preparing. There's at least, I don't know, I'm going to take a guess, 90 different objectives. 90 different objectives for implementation of all these objectives. How do you all manage that? Do you all split this up and pass it out? Or is there any checks and balances throughout the year to make sure that we're actually implementing everything that's within the plan?
Mr. Chairman, through you in response to Commissioner Schlobman's question. As with all of our master plan elements, they do have a number of goals, policies, and objectives. The question is, do we just write those documents and then put them on a shelf and ignore those? The answer is obviously no. There's a purpose in doing the city's master plan. It helps us to plan for future capital improvements, to address any facilities that the city may need in the future based on a growing population base and so forth. And so it's important that we do monitor those. One of the things that we do on an annual basis is we make a report on the city's master plan here to the Planning Commission. is we make a report on the city's master plan here to the Planning Commission and also to City Council, where we actually go through all the goals, policies and objectives and identify which ones have been met, which ones are in progress and which ones we still have to do yet. In terms of who's responsible for these, there's a number of different city departments who share those responsibilities in helping to implement those goals, policies and objectives. Obviously, we as the Department of Planning monitor those to make sure that they're done. But we also receive assistance from other departments, including Public Works, the City's Parks and Recreation Department and others in terms of completing those improvements and completing the goals and policies and objectives.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. It seems like we're, this time around, we're reducing the number of elements because of the legislature. Last time, we were forced to increase some. Time before that, we had a different number. I mean, it seems like they're very good spending the city's resources without much support for them.
In response to that question, the number of elements required by Nevada revised statutes has increased over the last 10 years. Most recently, the historic neighborhoods element was one that was added to the list that was required. At last session's legislature, the City of Las Vegas was a sponsor of a bill to reduce the number of required elements for a master plan for counties over 700,000 in population. And so we took the 19 required elements and reduced those down to eight elements. And so the master plan elements that you will have coming forward to you will reflect that revised list. So in the end, when we're done with the updates to the master plan, we'll only have eight elements instead of 19. So hopefully, that will reduce our tasks.
And then the legislature meets when?
Every two years.
Okay. One question I have, that I really believe the city has in looking at its public policy for these elements, is over the years, and people like Mr. Groenhauer has brought projects to us and several developers, where there's always remnant parcels, small incidental parcels that really, in the end, like we had at the last meeting, one that dictates how we've analyzed, or how staff analyzes the project. But yet, these are such remnant parcels that they would be much better served if the city and county could put together a group to vacate them, get rid of, you know, put them in private hands, clean them up and increase our tax base, which would pay for the staff that does that. I mean, every freeway that's ever been built has a remnant parcel adjacent to it that becomes a problem for development, whether it be public facilities or not. When you go under the freeways for the roadways, radius changes on corners, where private development has to hopefully address those in their mapping efforts. Public facilities don't typically map those. They don't vacate parcel lines. They don't do... But I honestly believe there is a pot of gold in just transferring these little incidental parcels to adjacent public ownership or private ownership and having them assessed tax-wise. I'm not, I'm just saying, that is a cleanup that would help staff over a period of time. And I think it would help projects as they come through infill pieces that have those remnant parcels adjacent to them. And I felt under this public facility, it might be a good time to talk about that.
Okay, absolutely. Certainly, I think that's a good point, that there are quite a number of remnant parcels that we see from time to time. And so certainly, we'll take that under consideration and take a look at what we can do about those. So we appreciate that.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonner?
Yeah, I have one question. But before saying that, I'd like to remind us all that there's a regional flood control. There's an dot for many of the highways that serve us. So some of this is cooperation among the different jurisdictions, all the way up to the state level. So this takes that kind of time to coordinate with those different entities. The question is, and I didn't spend a lot of time, but one question I found was the fire training services. Is there any reason to combine those with the county and the other jurisdictions instead of each jurisdiction having its own facilities? And any reason not to?
No, that really is kind of a larger question than what we can do here in the city's master plan. It really goes to an organizational question, if you will, in terms of combining fire services. There would certainly be certain economies of scale that would reflect on our public buildings element in terms of the number of facilities that we need to have and we need to man. But really, that becomes a policy decision for City Council and for the County Commission to work out. But understandably, there would be some savings there.
Thank you. Anybody else? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to adopt the combined plans for the general plan amendment elements.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale. Please vote. Motion to approve item 19 carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item will go forward to the June 18 City Council meeting.
Now move on now to related items 23 and 24, starting with item 23, which is VAR 53361. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a street name change along a primary street name alignment where such is not permitted on Clark Avenue between Main Street and Casino Center Boulevard in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman. There's a related item.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, you're right. I gotta go to related item number 24. SNC 533, excuse me, SNC 53360 for possible action on request for a street name change from Clark Avenue to Oscar B. Goodman Avenue. Now, staff, may we have the report?
Mr. Chairman. Staff supports the requested street name change and associated variance as the current street splits in two directions and visually reads as different streets, as well as no existing business in the area will be negatively affected. For this, for these reasons, staff recommends approval of the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I don't know how these processes get initiated. But I guess maybe I'm biased or have a longer relationship with Mayor Goodman, who brought us Symphony Park, brought us the Mob Museum, brought us this new city hall, the Malaski Building downtown and redevelopment under his watch, Oscar's River redevelopment over the Fifth Street School. And it seems to me that for somebody who has been for more than 12 years, or actually, more than 14 years, a pivotal part in this community of a public nature, i.e. the mayor, and then with his current involvement with the LVCBA, that we as a community could find some better way to honor someone than to name a block and a half and we can justify it because it doesn't cost any money. I mean, we have Joe Brown Drive. We've got Orrin Gregson Expressway. It seems to me that when we look to take a moment to recognize somebody's life achievement or their public life achievement, there's something more than a ceremonial street naming. And while I'm sure the mayor would always appreciate seeing his name in lights, I truly believe that if the community wants to recognize an individual of that stature, that it would be a much better environment to name the city hall after him, if you want to. I mean, somebody who fought the unions to get it built in the worst economic time in this valley and pushed to have something created that unlike most of the other municipalities, didn't bankrupt the city and has supported the downtown redevelopment. The Arts District is a direct result of much of his efforts to bring stuff, bring development downtown and his commitment to downtown. I would, I would much prefer to hold these two items and address it with the city manager's office and say, can't we do something that is more appropriate for someone who's done so much for this community?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Hi.
Commissioner Quinn?
You know, I just kind of was reading this and I was thinking on Rick's lines. A few blocks named after such a great man, to me, is just not enough. I feel that he's being short-changed. I mean, if it was Las Vegas Boulevard, if it was something bigger and grander. I mean, I'm not saying this street should not be named after the wonderful Mayor Oscar Goodman, but I'm completely with Rick on this. I believe in my heart that this might be a partial something for him, but it's certainly not grand enough for him. So I'm with you, Rick. Thanks.
Commissioner Schlobman?
Yes. Well, I agree, Vicki. I mean, we should, we could change Las Vegas Boulevard, but we'd be changing a lot of business people's addresses up and down there. Maybe we can name the street after him and name city hall. But if Rick wants to hold this, I'm with him. He can do some investigating with the city manager's office and/or whoever can. And we could bring this back and make sure we're doing the appropriate thing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bonner?
I'll just give a big ditto because I think it's not grand enough myself.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I concur too. I think the street's about the size to be named maybe Rick Truesdale way. I thought I'd just put that in there.
I was thinking about Orrin Goyens Boulevard.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject briefly before we get to the motion. Going back to the question of how did this originate, you have in your backup package a letter from Senator Bryan, who is the one who proposed the idea to the city manager and brought that forward to her. She then in turn directed staff to go ahead and proceed with the street name change application, which is why we are here tonight. I know that City Council does want to have some discussion on this issue as well. But again, I will leave that to the Planning Commission to decide how to proceed with this item.
And I would never second-guess Senator Bryan's commitment to the mayor and commitment to the community. He likewise has done phenomenal things for our community and our state. But I, I just, I know that the council would like to have conversation on this. But if we held it for one cycle, I would be glad to take the time to meet with city manager and talk with Senator Bryan about whether there's some additional opportunity here. So I would make a motion to hold this for 30 days. I don't think Mayor Goodman's going anywhere in the next 30 days. So if there's no other objections.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. The motion to obey this to the June 10, 2014 meeting carries on item number 23. And I guess item 24 as well. Moving on now to related items 25 and 26, beginning with item number 25, which is VAR 53490. The applicant owner is Carlos Avamaria for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a nine-foot side yard setback and residential adjacency setback where 10 feet is the minimum required and to allow a trash enclosure zero feet from a residentially zoned property where 50 feet is the minimum required at 5200 Vegas Drive in Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending denial. Related item number 26 is SDR 53491 for possible action on a request for a major amendment to site development plan review, SDR 19330, for a proposed 1,321 square foot building. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the site was originally approved for a 1,548 square foot office building with waivers to reduce or eliminate landscape buffer whiffs and quantities of vegetation. The applicant is seeking to amend the original approval to allow for an existing storage building that was built without permit. As part of this request, a variance from both the required side yard setback and from residential adjacency standards has been requested for the illegal structure, as well as a variance from residential adjacency standards has been requested for the proposed trash enclosure location. Staff has worked with the applicant regarding the relocation of the trash enclosure so as to secure adequate fire access to the rear of the property while mitigating the trash enclosure's impact upon adjacent residential properties and has continued, has conditioned the site development review to have the applicant continue to work with staff for an optional location, optimal location, excuse me. Staff finds that the applicant has created self-imposed hardship by constructing a commercial building without land use entitlements and building permits and recommends denial of the variance in associated site development plan review. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from the applicant, please. If you could state your name and address, sir?
Carlos Avamaria, 5200 Vegas Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89108.
Now tell us what you're trying to do here now?
Sure. We previously got approved for having the secondary structure, which were the two containers that were right next to each other. And then I needed some storage space. So I decided to move those things apart and put a roof over it. I was advised by the code enforcement that I needed pull permits. So I went to the city, the building department. They advised for me to go to the planning and ask for permission to have this structure in there. And then while revising the plans, they noticed about the trash enclosure being inadequate location as it is right now. And to my understanding, the distance between the building and the property line is that it should be at 10 feet and it's at nine right now.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Goyens?
Thank you. Thanks for taking my call today. Spoke briefly. I mean, it's been built over the years, but you've been building it without any permits. And so now we run into an issue where you are not in compliance. And so what's your justification for us to approve this? I mean, I don't, I don't understand.
Sincerely, I wasn't aware that I needed to pull permits to put the roof between the two containers. I wasn't. I do need the space to have a storage, you know, stuff in there. Company is to be bigger size and it downsized from 43 employees to five of us. So there's a lot of stuff that needs to be protected by the weather, by the elements. I'm asking to see if I could have that in that building to stay. I have engineered plans just to find that it's, you know, making some adjustments, it'll be a proper building. So it's up to you guys what you have me to do.
Commissioner Quinn?
Excuse me. So are you running your business out of this building?
No, the business, the main business is through the main building in the front. You can see in the picture part of it. I do have stored ladders and things inside this structure.
And this is an air conditioning business?
It is.
Okay. And then you live there as well?
No, I don't live there.
No? Okay. And then your surrounding neighbors, is that, it's all residential, correct?
It is. To the west side, there is a women's shelter. It is considered residential. And to the east side, there is also a, there's residential property also.
So what time do you get cracking in the morning, like 7:00 a.m. and?
Summers, about 7:00.
Till 7:00 at night?
Yeah, yeah. Most of the time, people are off the office by 5:00. But sometimes, you know, I may work there until 7:00.
Out of the office?
Yeah.
Out of this office?
8:00 typically, but the summer is when we start earlier.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, where, where's the trash enclosure that's zero feet off of a property line?
Well, the trash enclosure right now is right next to the main building. I don't know if I can see the pictures here. Right, it's, it's right there. You can see right next to the building. And that's, that's been there since, since this building was, it was, it was a house that burned down and they made it into an office. When they built it, they built that trash enclosure there. We went through several type of things that we did to this property, like changing the general plan amendment, changing the zoning, getting a special use permit for my business, some landscape permits I had to pull. This, this was all done in back, I believe in 2010. I had to asphalt the whole property in the back. I mean, all this was done here a few years ago and I wasn't mentioned that, that trash enclosure needed to be moved. I wasn't aware of that. And now they brought to my attention that that needed to be moved, or that needs to be moved because it needs to have two-way access to the back of the property for emergencies and stuff like that. So now, the only spot that I can see where the trash enclosure could be is right across it, which is, it's by the property line. I mean, the, the code specifies that it has got to be 50 feet away from each property line, but the property itself is 100 feet, so it's impossible for, to comply with that. And then to put it in the back anywhere, the Republic Services will not go inside the property to grab the two-yard enclosure or the two-yard trash enclosure, yeah.
So let me ask you this. The, the representation of that garage there, are those shipping containers of some type?
Yeah, they're, they're Conex.
Is that a permanent structure sitting on a, on a concrete foundation or can that be moved?
At this time, they can be moved because of the, of the roof that's on top of there. But before, yeah, they could have been moved, but they're not.
That's the roof you put on with no permits and so now?
That's the one that I did without permits, yes.
So now you're saying you put it on with no permits and it's now a permanent structure and you can't move it?
Yeah, yeah. It does need to have, be more secure though, according to the engineer, if that's the case. But no, it can be moved. I mean, the, the, in between the two door entrances, there's, there's a footing that's holding this front of it together, so.
Well, I don't want to redesign this at the podium and I, I'm, I'm not in the mood to approve it at this time because I'm very sensitive to the, to the business that's to the east of you, where I served for a number of years and it's, it's very important.
It's to the west.
Or to the west, I'm sorry, in the business. So, right now, I don't have a resolution and I don't want to design, redesign this thing at the podium. I may want to, you know, the commissioners don't have any, any comments. I may want to hold this item and massage it a little bit more to see how we can come to some type of compromise here.
Sure.
Commissioner Bolner, before you make your motion, Commissioner Goins?
I still have, I'm, I don't know where the trash enclosure is. I can't, is it on the east property line?
It's, it's on the east side of the main building in the front. I'm, I don't know if?
So it's attached to the building?
It's?
Commissioner, if you look at that under the photos, the one with the red truck?
Yes.
You'll see to the left, attached to that building, that little wall, that's the trash enclosure right there.
All right. I understand. I got my answer.
Commissioner Goins will entertain your motion.
Let me help clarify. And then that's the current location. In order to gain fire access, the applicant has relocated it on the plans that are before you, on the screen currently, to the east side of the property. It's hard to see. It's one of the parking spaces right along the, it says new trash enclosure.
That's what I thought.
Yes, and that's proposed, so the proposal at this time is to move it to that location. The concern staff has is it still will not create two-way access to the back of the property and it will still be an obstruction. So that's, the condition of approval has been added to work with staff to find a better location if possible.
Thank you. Commissioner Goins?
So, Mr. Rankin, you're saying the representation of the, where these parking spaces are and the condition says that you will continue to work with them to find a suitable location for the, for the trash container?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. That's correct. With the proposed location, it would require a redesign of the parking configuration to allow for a 20-foot, 24-foot drive aisle so that two, two-way circulation could occur. The conditions, as they are placed in the site development review, would facilitate that.
You know what, on, on, after looking at that, looking at the motion then, as long as, as long as you're meaning to be able to work with staff and staff to get it there, then I can, I pretty much can live with that at that point. So, Mr. Chairman, without any more questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion for approval on item 25, VAR 53490, subject to staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item 25 carries.
One question. That, that, that's enough for a, I guess, one, a single Republic truck to get in there with the front forklifts and pick that up and dump it over top of the truck? Is that, is that what we're looking at width-wise?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The, the width-wise is in relation to the two-way traffic for public access to the parking spaces as well as if the relocation of the trash enclosure for the, the truck to be able to maneuver in and out of the site.
Okay, thank you. With that, Chairman, item 26, move for approval of SDR 53491, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item 26 carries.
Mr. Chairman, these items will go forward to the June 18th city council meeting. What I'd recommend to the applicant is to meet with staff before the city council meeting and see if we can resolve the dumpster issue.
Okay, will do. Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on now to related items 27 and 28, beginning with item number 27, which is SUP 53303. The applicant owner is Living Word Christian Church for possible action on a request for a major amendment to an approved special use permit, U 007-98, for a 4,500 square foot expansion of an existing church house of worship at 1202 Vista Drive in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Related item number 28 is SDR 53302 for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a 4,500 square foot expansion of an existing church house of worship. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to construct a new church building on the subject site to replace the existing 2,723 square foot church building on the site that was formerly utilized for church services. The former church building will now be utilized for storage. Staff recommends approval of the requested development as the proposal is compatible with the existing adjacent land uses and the design of the church creates an orderly and aesthetically pleasing environment. Please note that additional letters of support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, my name's LeVar Short. I own, I'm a general contractor for Frontier Builders. They've been working on this project for about 10 years and so this is coming to fruition. So, we're really grateful for having a hearing here today. And I might add that as you look at this, we're going to have all new landscaping in front. We're right next door to the, the Hebrew Academy, which is a brand-new building, all-new curb gutter sidewalk and then enhancing the existing property. I might also add that the storage warehouse in the back has been renovated in the front for, to become more attractive to anyone coming by. Like I say, this has been a, a project that's taken several years to come to fruition, so we're excited about it. Anything that you want to bring up is, is good. We're hoping for approval on it.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Quinn?
Good evening, Mr. Short. I've driven by the project, your property, about two or three times in the last week and I noticed there's only service there. Is that correct? At 10:30 on, is it Sundays, 10:30 in the morning, Sundays is the service, the church itself?
10:30 in the morning, yes.
So, and then let me ask you something. Are there activities at nighttime there? A lot of activity?
Well, I, I don't think really that there'd be any, you know, anything more than a normal church service in, in the facility itself, so.
Right. Okay, so let's talk about south of you at the Robert Cohen Education Center, the beautiful Hebrew school.
Yes, yeah.
Can I count on you to, to continue that landscape and match it and make it look just, because that's beautiful there. I mean, they outdid themselves. So, to continue it, I see your landscape plan is very good and it's in place and, and that, that's your plan is to continue it down the street and make it look as nice as your neighbor?
Absolutely. With that, with the fence going in there, there's going to be a, a small offset area that'll all be landscaped and then the curb and gutter.
Yeah.
Which would meet the city's, would be in compliance with that.
Your north and south sides look fine, but that east is gonna, is gonna be, you know, consistent with what's to the south of you.
It is.
So it's great. It's a, it's a great project and I know we had some concerns about that big property going in next door to you and what it was going to do for that neighborhood and it's really did nothing but enhance it. So if my commissioners have nothing to say, I'm going to be happy to approve your item this evening if anybody else doesn't have anything to say. So, going on to item number 27, which is the, the special use permit for 53303, I'm going to make a motion for approval tonight following all of staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item number 27 carries.
Thank you, Commissioner, Director. And then moving on to item number 28, which is the SDR, the site development plan review number 53302, I'm going to also offer staff's recommendation tonight for approval and to follow their recommendations for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Item number 28 carries.
Mr. Chairman, please note that these items will be forwarded to city council for the June 18th city council meeting with a recommendation of approval.
Thank you. Going on now to item number 29. The applicant is Las Vegas Billboards. The owner is Gibbs Family Trust for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed off-premise sign at 1111 A Street in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed off-premise sign is located within 150 feet of Interstate 15, which permits the overall height to exceed 40 feet. The sign would be 49 feet tall, have 670 square feet of sign area and no additional embellishments. The proposed off-premise sign meets all minimum code requirements and as such, staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. May I hear from the applicant and sir, if you'll state your name and address?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Chad Harris, Las Vegas Billboards, 5665 South Valley View Boulevard. Here to respectfully request your approval on this item. If you have any questions, I'm here to field them.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, real, real quickly, I wanted to ask staff, this was brought to my attention right before the meeting over some concerns about the distant separation of, of the signs on this property and also the ownership of the property. Are those all in proper order?
In regards to the signing, the off-premise signs that we were able to locate are displayed on the item before you, those are the off-premise signs. There is an on-premise sign located at the Ewing Brothers' site. At one time, it was an off-premise sign. It advertises the Ewing Brothers' tow yard located there. It was changed sometime in the past. It no longer functions as an off-premise sign and staff, I don't know exactly when, made a determination that it was no longer an off-premise sign. It no longer functioned as such. As far as ownership of the property, we confirmed ownership of the property as the Gibbs Family Trust and that is what is located, what is listed on the assessor's records research.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Sloman?
And Chairman, through you, this is a LED sign, right?
Yes, sir.
My same comments that I'll echo every time that we have a LED sign come before us is we don't, we don't have an understanding of nets. We don't have anybody to measure the illumination coming off these signs and we're not regulating it. And every time I drive around downtown, Sahara, Las Vegas Boulevard, all over the place, I get blinded by these signs at night because they don't regulate themselves and they're not going to regulate themselves if we don't regulate them. So until we come up with some sort of standard or enforcement for these where we're not getting blinded going down the street, I don't think I can, I can support any more of these applications.
May I? Our signs will have automated dimmers on them in the evenings from dusk to dawn. They'll be dimmed down at night by the auto dimmer.
Any other comments? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, I know there's a request on this for final action, but I'm going to ask that this go on to city council on June 18th. I'm going to go ahead and follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all staff recommendations and condition.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote.
Commissioner Quinn? Oh, there it goes.
Motion to approve, item number 29 carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that item will go forward to the June 18th city council meeting.
Thank you.
Item number 30 is SUP 53468. The applicant is Si Young Yai. The owner is Miguel Family Trust, 1993 et al., for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer wine cooler on sale establishment use within a 1,484 square foot portion of an existing 63,883 square foot swap meet with a waiver to allow a 107-foot distance separation from a house of worship where 400 feet is required at 1560 Northeastern Avenue in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the, the application needs a waiver of the distance separation of a church of house of worship where 400 feet is required. They're providing 107 feet. The need for the distance separation waiver indicates that the application is not compatible or harmonious with the surrounding properties and that therefore staff recommends denial. Please note, we have received additional protests since publication.
Thank you. Could we hear from the applicant, please? Sir, if you'll give us your name and address?
Good evening, Chairman and Commission, Planning Commission. My name is Jeff Yee. I'm representing Si Young Yee for requesting a waiver of 107-foot distance where 400 feet is required. If I may put into context the, the, the project, it's, we, we are trying to revive that area, the swap meet. We, the owner, Si Young Yee, also, who, who also owns the? The owner, Si Young Yi, also, who also owns the swap meet, he started operations in January of this year, 2014, and we, he is, the strategy of the, of the sub-special use permit for this Delmar restaurant is to provide an attraction for, for the family to enjoy music, entertainment, a sports game here or there, and to address your concerns regarding the, the distance, if I may, if you can permit me the overhead projection. Oh, I don't know. Yeah, oh, we have a, here's the, the church here. We have 107-foot distance.
Excuse me, yeah, there you go.
There we go.
Can you show us again what you were just saying?
Oh, sure.
Because you were off-screen.
Here we see the two Pentecostal Church here with the, with the major street, Northeastern Avenue, with the 107-foot distance where the parcel outline is. The parking lot space is approximately 500, 450 feet, and within the swap meet, the, the restaurant is located in the rear of the restaurant, and that's another, approximately another 150 feet to, to get there. So, we are pleading with the Planning Commission to reconsider the, reconsider the motion for approval. We, we also have a petition signed here from the, from 37 of the 47 swap meet vendors inside of the, inside the swap meet, supporting the request for this special use permit, believing that it'll attract people to the swap meet and the plaza, generate income for the collective vendors through the increased traffic, and have the ability to create more small businesses and jobs in the community. And I'll address any concerns or questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you. I appreciate you wanting to do this, and typically, I don't have a problem with the beer/wine on sale. However, this is right in the middle of a swap meet, and looking at all the code violations, at least one, two, sometimes three per year, illegal vendors, and the list goes on. There's about 18 of them here, 15 of them, and, I mean, it just, there's a track record since 2002 of, somebody's not looking after the businesses, somebody's not, you know, making sure that every person there is a legal vendor, and then what, what's gonna happen is people are gonna walk in, they're gonna grab an alcoholic beverage with their mill, and they're gonna carry it around the whole swap meet. And the business owners aren't gonna be there to ensure that they're staying within that restaurant, and this 63,000-square-foot building doesn't become a, become a tavern or a 63,000-square-foot food court with everybody drinking, so that, I have serious concerns with that. Thank you.
To address your concerns, if you permit me?
Just, I'll have you, go ahead, go ahead and address them.
Mr. Commissioner Sloman, the owner, Si Young Yi, does have, does have another swap meet on Charleston Land, and he's been there for 15 years now. He has made sure that everyone there is compliant to the, to the, to the laws and business laws, at least, and he just acquired this business because the previous owner had deceased last year, and he, he has committed to do the same thing with this swap meet that he has in, in his other one, on Charleston Land, Charleston Indoor Swap Meet. But also to address the fact, it's a very, it's an enclosed space, and we will only allow, we'll limit the amount of alcohol that is, that a person is able to consume to, to beverage, to 12 ounce, to 12 fluid ounce beverages, and they can only, and only in conjunction with the meal, and we will, we will strictly enforce the fact that they can only consume these beverages inside the restaurant.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of comments. So, I can appreciate that, and, and taking over a business that has had these issues, but sometimes trying to change the core values of the people who manage these places, unless you're getting rid of everybody and starting over from scratch, takes a while. So, I mean, for me to feel comfortable with this, I would say, go for a couple of years without any violations, come back and show us that it could actually, it could actually work, and then maybe I'd change my mind, but it doesn't change overnight when you buy a business. The violations don't go away overnight, and it could be quite some, quite a challenge. And maybe my colleagues will think differently, but that's just basically my, my thoughts at this particular point. It's nothing against you or the, the new business owner. I hope you do clean it up, because it definitely needs some help over there.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item number 30, SUP 53468, I'd make a motion, follow staff's recommendation of denial.
Please vote, and note that a yes vote is for denial. Motion to deny carries.
Mr. Chairman, please note that this item will go forward to the June 18th City Council meeting with a recommendation of denial from the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Item number 31 is SUP 53471. The applicant is Tenea Creek. The owner is Ye Old Goat's Head Pub Limited for possible action on request for a special use permit for a proposed 17,321 square-foot urban lounge use with 970 square feet of outside seating area at 1310 South 3rd Street in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, before you proceed, I'm gonna abstain on the assignment as much as I own property within the notice area.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed project meets the primary goals of the 18B Arts District, to promote the arts in general, as well enhance some existing businesses, as well encouraging new pedestrian-oriented commercial, professional, and residential growth within the neighborhood. All Title 19 code requirements are being met. Staff recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional letters of support since publication.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicant, please?
And Mr. Chairman, before we begin, I'm gonna go ahead and abstain on this item, seeing as how I own an urban lounge within the area.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right.
Good evening, Tim Etter, 3101 North Tenea Way, Las Vegas.
Christina Etter-Rausch at 8901 Greensboro Lane in Las Vegas, both of us with Tenea Creek.
Thank you. Are you gonna accept all the conditions of staff?
Yes.
Thank you. You have anything else to say on this, or?
No.
Well, looking forward to being new business owners in downtown after 15 years in the tech center.
Okay, great. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion or a motion
I'll make a motion. We're on number 31. So, the outside seating area is what you're adding, and I just want to ensure you, and have you ensure me that every disabled person will be able to enter and use your property, because we've had a few come by us that I'm ashamed of, and I wanna make sure that if somebody shows up there in a wheelchair, you're gonna be able to service them.
Absolutely. I think the, the site plan, you're showing the floor plan right now, but I believe the site plan is supposed to depict an accessible route. If it doesn't, we'll obviously make sure that...
For the outside and the inside and the whole thing, right?
Of course, yes.
Okay, good. All right, with that, I'm gonna make a motion for approval, putting on the record that it is accessible for a disabled patron in a wheelchair with SUP 53471, following all staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number 31 carries, noting the abstentions of Commissioners Truesdale and Schloman.
Mr. Chairman, please note this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Item 32 is SUP 53476. The applicant owner is Tamara Mardueno for possible action on a request for a special use permit for animal keeping and husbandry on a site of less than two acres in which exotic animals would be located closer than 1,500 feet from a residential dwelling at 5520 Fiorina Circle in Ward 4, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to house a variety of small mammals, primates, and bird species. The requested use failed to meet the minimum conditional use requirements as outlined by As it did not meet the minimum two-acre requirement, as such, a special use permit is required for a lot smaller than two acres. The applicant is proposing to construct one, 100-square-foot enclosed cage and two 200 square-foot enclosed cages in which all animals will be confined and secured. The use would be ancillary to the primary residential use of the property and would not be open to the public. The, the existing surrounding area is rural in nature, with horses and other animals commonly found through the, through a rural area. The applicant did host a neighborhood meeting last night, which is part of your blue sheet backup, the report on that. Staff does recommend approval with conditions. Please note, we received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicants, please? If you'll state your names and address?
My name is Hector Mardueno, and I'm at 5520 Fiorina Circle.
My name is Tamara Mardueno. I'm at 5520 Fiorina Circle.
Do you accept the conditions of staff?
The only condition we had a concern about was on the lemur. We understand the noise issue, and we agree with it. We were just wondering if it would be okay to maybe change it out to a marmoset, which is basically the smallest primate, which does not make any noise. Because we are a rescue, we're trying to keep our doors open, because we don't know what kind of animals we will get. So, being that the lemur might cause a noise issue, we would like to open the doors to maybe this kind of animal that might come to us.
Mr. Chairman, through you, and I, I think, I think a marmoset would be an acceptable small mammal or a small primate. It is a small primate. It specifically limits lemurs, which are quite noisy and boisterous at times. The marmoset doesn't make any noise. It's pretty nocturnal, eats bugs.
Okay, thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion. The commission, Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you, a question for the applicants. In your justification letter, you have quite a few animals, and half of them, I can't even pronounce their names, so, do you actually have all those, or those are ones that you're just planning on potentially keeping at your site?
Those, those are what we plan to keep on our site. We do not have any animals right now.
Okay. And one last question. What's a bush baby?
A bush baby is, it's a marsupial. The animals that we put on our list are common animals in Las Vegas that we could, that you could find at a rescue here, because they have become common in the pet trade. That's, we just, we listed many animals. We're, we're not gonna have all of those animals at the, at the property.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Truesdale?
I'm here to speak on behalf of the lemurs who've been slighted by this whole process, you know? But I will support your application. Thank you.
If I may, please?
Commissioner Quinn?
I will support this application as well, as long as there is a one-year administrative review on this to make sure that they are these little lemurs and nothing big like cats and, you know, not that I'm, I just feel more comfortable if we keep an eye on this myself. So whoever makes the motion, I'd like to see a one-year review administratively where they go out and look at it. Is that okay, Doug? Right?
And I'd like to be present there, Doug.
Commissioner Goines?
Well, I think you're doing a good deed. I won't be supporting this, because I can, I can see it right now. It's an animal that's gonna make noise, and within a year or so, all your neighbors are gonna be back in here, because there's gonna be too many animals in the neighborhood, so you won't see much support on it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I had mixed feelings on this, because, you know, we've had a couple incidences in Las Vegas in the last several years where animals have escaped, and one had to be put down before it harmed somebody. But looking at the size of the animals that you have, and, and it appears that you had your meeting last night, and I did see the results of that, and it didn't seem like your next-door neighbors had any problem with this, and I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Quinn, maybe a one-year review on this to see what the noise levels are, maybe come back in a year. If we got noise problems, we may have to eliminate that type of animal as a condition or something to that effect. But I will support this.
If, if we may, on your comment on the animals that have escaped and things like that, those are usually owners. I'm a wildlife rehabilitator, and she's in exotic animal behavior. She's had the experience for about 10 years. She's worked in Europe, as well as here in the U.S. So, the reason why we're, we feel comfortable bringing it to the community, one, we've run it through our neighbors, as well as, we are two educated people that, you know, we, we have considered the animals, what noises it make. We, basically, we, we have the experience and the knowledge to, to be able to handle this, and we agree on coming back in a year, because we do understand this is a limited property. And we're trying to use it as a stepping stone, basically. We don't plan on having a sanctuary here until we can hopefully get a bigger property in a different location.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, thank you. We're on item number 32, which is special use permit 53476. I am gonna follow staff's recommendations. I'm a little reluctant, too, but I'm going to add a one-year administrative review, and with that, I'll make the motion for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number 32 carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. Item number 33 is SUP 53484. The applicant owner is Fremont Travel Inn LLC for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed hotel residence at 2028 Fremont Street in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to convert an existing motel into a hotel residence for long-term rentals at 2028 Fremont Street. The change in use will provide another housing option for those that choose to live in the downtown. This request would allow the new owners to rent on a long-term basis rather than on a short-term basis under the motel regulations. There are no minimum special use permit requirements for the use, and staff recommends approval, subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicant, please?
Lucy Stewart, 2500 West Sahara, representing the property, and...
Matt Jennings, 11432 Drappo Avenue.
And as staff indicated, that this is a property that does have a little bit of a history to it. There's now a new owner. I think one of the issues that the business license department had in the past was, I don't think there was any onsite security or any onsite offices, and that's one of the things that's a little bit different about this project, too, is that it is our intent to have an office, an onsite manager, and a manager's room, so there'll be somebody there 24/7, and onsite security. We are making a little bit of a change in that. We wanna make, we've got like two with potential three handicap parking spaces, and we're actually adding, we're going to increase that to six, because we wanna have six of the units fully ready for a handicap spaces, and then if that ends up being a good market, we can actually convert the whole first floor if we need to. We can convert a room in about two to three days. So if that ends up being popular, then we'll end up converting our parking lot more to more handicap parking. But we did do a parking analysis. There is a bus line that runs right in front of the facility, and so we think that this is a great location for a longer-term stay.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Slomson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and disclosure before I begin, my house is within about 400 feet of this, but it's not going to affect me any greater or lesser than anyone else, and I feel that I can add a little bit of value here, so we'll be voting on this. There's been a lot of properties in the area that's been troubled with drugs and prostitution and this and that, but I really haven't seen that issue with the travelers in, in the past. And, you know, it was open, then it was closed for, I think, a year-long period while they're remodeling. I think they'll reopen. I really don't pay attention because there's really not a lot of activity going on within that one hotel. So I forget the gentleman's name who was managing it a couple of years ago, five years ago, but he's always done a real good job with keeping it clean and keeping the cops out of there and keeping the cops out of there, keeping the drugs and prostitution out of there. So I don't think this will affect anything, anything along Fremont, any greater or lesser. It might actually help because instead of renting rooms by the hour or by the half-day as many of these little places, I won't name which hotels across the street from me do, you know, this hopefully will allow a little bit more permanent of residence and help keep some of that crime down. So I support it and glad staff made the recommendation of approval and I'll see what everybody else has to say.
Commissioner Quinn?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item number 33, SUP 53484, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve, item 33, Carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Item number 34 is SUP 53504. The applicant is Cecil Walker. The owner is Philadelphia Trust for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a facility for transitional living for released offenders with waivers to a location not within 1,500 feet of an existing bus stop and distance separation of 505 feet from a city park and 690 feet from an individual care center, or 1,500 feet is the minimum distance required, at 240 West Philadelphia Avenue in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site currently contains three single-story multifamily residential structures. The applicant is requesting to place the use within the 3,200-square-foot structure located along the western portion of the subject site. The two remaining structure would continue to be utilized as multifamily residential use. The requested use fails to meet the minimum special use requirements as outlined by Title 1912, as is located within 1,500 feet of a city park and individual care center licensed for more than 12 children, as well as fails to be within 1,500 feet of an existing bus stop served by regional bus system. For those reasons, staff cannot support the application and is recommending denial of the request. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing as well as two e-commerce. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant? Ma'am, if you'll state your name and address, please?
Yes, Cecil Walker, 3440 Shawaway, North Las Vegas, 89032.
Thank you. Tell us what you're trying to do.
Well, actually, here I'm trying to open a transitional for nonviolent ex-offenders that'll be coming out of prison for first time, that they've never have, you know, like a previous record, to give them a reentry time to come back and to do correctly and have the right guidance and to be able to have a chance to reiterate and be back into society. So my thing is, I just want to be able to be able to house them and give them a proper environment to where they could come out and do what they need to do to get home to their families and to provide and just continue on with a good life and not get back in trouble. I just want to provide so they can have some type of assisting and a place to come to that's loving and caring and will guide them in the right direction.
Okay, thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I commend what the applicant's goals are, but this is the wrong location. The city has spent significant dollars in building the community center there, which people come from all over this valley to avail themselves of a language program. English is a second language. And a lot of children, and we just built a park that opened up, I think, eight months ago across the street, designed strictly for children, for kids. And you take that with some of the other issues that are in this area that are slowly changing, but they still haven't changed enough. I think this would be a recipe for disaster over here. And it's taken 25 years for this neighborhood to go through its transition, and now it's starting to come back. The city recognizes that. Business people in, along Las Vegas Boulevard recognize that we need to do the right things to help this neighborhood be what it can be. And it just doesn't fit with the transitional goals of your mission. So for that, I won't even bring up all the other issues I deal with in this neighborhood all the time, but we're on a direction of making it better, and this would not, in my opinion, be the appropriate solution.
Can I speak?
If there's somebody else, then Chief, you can.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I work in the public workforce system and I work for a company that actually funds reentry programs. I didn't see your name come across my desk, but I just wanted to ask, are you, have you applied for any funding through workforce connections for any of your programs?
Not yet. I'm on sam.gov and grant.gov and they send me different opportunities that's open, but I haven't actually applied. I've been doing everything on my own, funding and everything, so I haven't received any funding from them, no.
I read in your backup, you said absolutely no sex offenders, correct?
Correct. No sex, no nonviolent, no, any type of person that's done any type of violent crime, they're not allowed in the facility. So SOs, child molesters, they're...
So let me ask you this. You mentioned you said men and/or women.
Correct.
Are you looking at a mixed ratio of one or the other, or are you looking at one specific gender?
One specific. I just put men and/or women if I decided to do women or men, but I'm going with men.
Will there be any on-property managers 24 hours?
Oh, 24/7 supervision where they're going to be mandated, where there will be someone there 24 hours where they check in to make sure that they're there. Care fee will be 9:45, no later than 10:00. They'll have to attend meetings if needed. I'm also working with Mr. Chaney, who's supporting me. Also, Deb Messi, Debra Massey at the community center also gave me a letter where she supports me in having this in the area for the transitional. So I do have her approval for as for the community center, for as the kids and the park area. And she's allowed for me to, she's given me brochures and everything for the guys to be able to have, to know the member fees and all that and know the times that they will be able to allow to go there.
So will you be receiving these transitional participants from High Desert?
From High Desert, I'll be straight contracted with the state. I've already paid my monies to them, so they're just waiting for me to come with the property for six to eight people. So I'll be contracted with the state with parole and probation. They'll be supervised. If they have any other type of case manager, whatever they need, I will closely work with them, but mainly with the state, and they will be coming from the prison, the caseworker from the prison.
So what types of transitional programs will you utilize at the center? Because most of these reentry programs have to have a tight, very tight and restricted program 24 hours a day.
Correct.
To prevent things like loitering and, you know, malicious intent within the neighborhood. Because as Commissioner Truesdale said, you know, I don't know how long you've been in Vegas, but if you were here even 10 years ago.
I've been here 12 years.
This may have been the perfect fit for that.
Correct.
But now this area has really transitioned and is on an upward swing. And I'm just really concerned, but I know there is a need, and I'm a compassionate person and I believe in person for a second chance. But we have to be very careful from a land use perspective, especially with an area that's transitioning, where we're bringing back the parks and the kids and the walkable community. And it's just one of those red flags when you put this type of transitional use right in the middle of that, it can be cause for real concern.
Correct. I understand that, but they will be, it wouldn't be access to where the outside could come in. It's all gated off, so they'll have access, well, they'll call and we'll let go out and let them in. So it wouldn't be like they have the access to just to travel and go as they may, as they please. They have to sign out, let us know where they're going to, if they're going for a job interview or whatever they're doing, we have to know about their whereabouts at all times. And also the parole and probation will know about their whereabouts. So I'm working closely with parole and probation, behavioral health with Ms. Agatha Ambry. I'm working with Mr. Chaney and also Mr. Coffin supports me.
Which Chaney?
Lonny Chaney. And then also Mr. Chaney that owns Grit's Cafe.
What's your background and your credentials in running this? And have you ever run one of these in the state of Nevada or any other state?
I've never ran per se transitional, but I have assisted like maybe five to six people that has come to my home that I have, was able to allow them to, or the prison allowed them to come be at my home, and I've never had a problem. They actually, after the second person, the third one who did was able to come to parole to my house, they didn't even want to come out. They was like, they let it go because they knew that my record, I've never had someone who've come, got released and returned back to the prison system. So it's something that I had a passion for from the beginning, but I was just doing it on my own, just helping like people that I knew that had needed to get out and I just wanted to help them and guide them. And they've all gotten out and done very well. So now I've decided to, you know, let me see if I can help more people, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no more questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Slomson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your story and wish you a lot of luck. It's tough. Everybody says not in my backyard and where do we locate these places? And, you know, we're not going to find one right in Rancho Circle and we're not home. But then we get into an area that has had a lot of crime in the past and then we start thinking if we're putting a transitional living facility in an area that's had a lot of crime, does that encourage them to get back into mischief? And so I've been so torn on this. But one of the, one of the main items, the key points is even though you're not allowing sexual offenders and the violent crime, when we approve this, if you turn around and sell this within two years or five years, it's still a transitional living. So therefore, it still could turn into sexual offenders or whatever being accepted into that facility. And that's quite often when we're looking at these items, and I know you got a comment, but just give me one more second. We got, we got to look at what's going to happen five, 10 years down the road, and then will it even be appropriate in this area in five or 10 years? Mr. Chairman, she's dying to say something. If I can let her make it.
Certainly, please.
Finish my comment.
Yeah, just...
Oh, no, no. I was listening. I was just saying that I wasn't planning to be there for over like a year or two. I wanted to find, I just wanted to start there because I have Mr. Coffin's approval to go to that area. So that's why I went to that area. I went to the councilman first and spoke with him, and he directed me to that area.
Okay. I'm going to let Mr. Slomson finish with his comments and then...
You know, I just, I think on some of these items, I mean, we will give a little bit of leeway on certain things, on distance separations and you're 497 feet away from a house of worship and we're 500 required to sell alcohol or something along those lines. But, I mean, we're 50% off from the distance separation from the city park and the individual care center. The bus stop really didn't matter to me. It was only 77 feet off, but, I mean, we're at 690 feet from it, from a, or 505 square, or 505 linear feet from a city park, or 1,500 required. So we only have 33% of the required distance separation, and we have less than 50% of the required distance separation for the individual care center. It sounds like it would be an excellent facility with you there. I just don't know if this particular location is right, so.
Thank you. I've been a little bit torn over this one as well, and I've enjoyed listening to you tonight, and I think you've done your homework on this, and I think your heart's in the right place. Problem is, I think your property's in the wrong place. I have to agree with Commissioners Truesdale and Commissioner Slomson on this, that this is an area in transition and the waivers you're seeking are just too great. And so unfortunately, although I applaud your efforts on this and I hope you can find a place that works for you, I can't support this specific location. I would urge you to find another location if you can, come back to us, and if it meets the parameters, I think we'll be able to approve it.
Okay, even though if I...
Ma'am, I can't have a comment right now, so the, I'm going to now entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, again, I appreciate all the effort of the applicant and the best intentions in the world, but I am going to follow staff's recommendation because of the distance separations and the compatibility issues and the public safety issues of that neighborhood and make a motion for denial.
Please vote. No to net, a yes vote is for denial. Motion to deny, Carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will go forward to the June 18 city council meeting with a recommendation of denial.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item 35, SDR 53435. The applicant is Ernest Patton. The owner is Prayer Center Revival Ministries. For possible action on request for a site development plan review for a proposed 7,378 square-foot church house of worship with waivers to allow reductions in portions of all landscape buffering requirements at 1316 and 1352 Miller Avenue and 1329 West Carey Avenue in Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, there are three lots containing an existing 1,673-square-foot church house of worship, an undeveloped lot, and a vacant building at 1316 Miller Avenue and 1329 West Carey Avenue. This request will allow the site to be cleared and new construction to occur. Five perimeter landscape buffer waivers and two exceptions to allow the reduction in parking lot landscape islands and parking lot vegetation are required. The applicant has mitigated the reduction in landscape buffer width and number of landscape islands by providing more trees and shrubs overall than is required by code and varying the type, quantity, and spacing throughout the site. Staff is in support of the request of site development plan review and associated waivers and recommends approval. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Like to hear... Like to hear from the applicant, please. I don't see that we have an applicant, do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners, possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to speak with the applicant because I had a couple concerns on the, on the, on the design of this building, namely the fact that it's a 7,000 square foot building, and I'm only seeing two handicap spaces out in the front. And I did want to talk a little bit about the metal building versus looking at your traditional church. So I just had some reservations about that and wanted to discuss it with the applicant, so.
Do you want to move to obey it to the June meeting?
That would be my request.
Okay. Is that your motion?
That would be my motion to obey it.
Thank you. Motion to obey item number 35 to the June 10, 2014 Planning Commission meeting carries. Move on now to Director's business, beginning with item number 37, which is TXT 53243. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action to amend LVMC Chapter 19.12 related to permitted uses and Chapter 19.18 related to definitions and measures to amend the zoning district applicability descriptions and definitions for various uses related to crop and animal production and food processing, and to provide for other related matters. Staff is recommending approval, staff may read the report, please.
This text amendment would allow for urban farming and crop production and animal production in CPB and industrial zones within the City of Las Vegas. The City of Las Vegas is moving towards more requests for these type of uses. This request does not include medical marijuana, it's specifically prohibited as a use as part of this, but would allow such uses as shrimp farming, tomatoes, and other types of product within enclosed buildings in the industrial zone area. And staff does recommend approval, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Ma'am, are you wanting to be heard? Okay, thanks. Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, as this appears to permit a more agrarian lifestyle, do we have an idea of what type of are these, if you put a shrimp farm in here, does that create a burden on the wastewater treatment costs within the valley that other businesses would share as an offset? Or is it possible for somebody to, in raising, in animal production, to open a warehouse and grow chickens in a large quantity in a cage feeding environment?
This amendment would, to answer the first part of the question, the wastewater treatment would be probably no more than human, human production, and will be controlled through the environmental division of the City of Las Vegas Public Works Department. In regards to allowing the raising of chickens, it would allow for the raising of chickens within the, in an indoor facility as part of that. So yes, it would permit that type of urban, urban farming and animal husbandry.
Which, which I think may be appropriate in some locations, but not all of these zones that the city has are as well defined as some zones. And my concerns are that a chicken farm or, I mean, I can imagine people taking warehouses and raising Kobe beef in there because all they're doing is massaging them and shooting them full of vitamins and.
Stereotrich.
We have a quasi slaughter operation, which is, I don't think is, it may be, but it's, I don't believe it's the global intent of this, to deal with local farming. I think we have a million acres around this valley that provide, with a little bit of water, a great growing environment. So I'm just, my concerns that we aren't jumping on the bandwagon for an urban garden, and we're winding up with urban commercial farms.
Mr. Chairman, through you, one of the solutions might be, currently, staff has recommended it be a permitted use within the, as an indoor facility, perhaps maybe make it a special use permit within the industrial zones, so that the Planning Commission could have a review of the type of facility that's being proposed, whether it's a shrimp farm, for example, the one in North Las Vegas that's operating, that grows shrimp and aquaponics versus the production of poultry in large warehouse facilities, or Kobe beef in a indoor facility. So that may be a solution or a recommendation that the Planning Commission could direct staff on. We look forward, that's why we bring these items to you, for your discussion and input.
And honestly, I think it, it's generally well intended to try and, I've been to the shrimp farm and the tomato farms in North Las Vegas, and they are fairly innocuous. But the pig farms, whole different story out in North Las Vegas, and it's, it's when we, we lose track of where, what our good intents are, it comes to, so I think if we added a special use permit, it would give this board and the council another, you know, review process that might prevent one of those from slipping through the cracks at some point.
Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, I'm wondering on under number six for the, an area for raising and harvesting agricultural crops on a commercial basis with a company in wholesale or retail sales. Assessing conditional use regulations, the use shall be conducted entirely within an enclosed space, except that up to one quarter of the area contained in the use may be located in the open air for ancillary educational purposes. I could understand maybe a shrimp farm or something like that, that's going to be producing some sort of smells that travel over property lines and things like that, but what if, what if there is something that somebody wants to grow something outdoors on a commercial basis for harvesting, that pretty much wouldn't be allowed? So I'm wondering why we're making that restriction.
Would that be in reference to allowing an open area for educational purposes? It would allow a plaza area for demonstration purposes of what's occurring out in the open air is what staff's intent was of that condition. It wouldn't be the main production facility, it'd be a small ancillary area for educational purposes only on how the operation, if they chose to have such as a plaza to demonstrate what they do.
But what if, I mean, what, what if it's a particular type of crop that grows better with direct sunlight instead of having to have grow lights and everything else to harvest that particular crop? That's pretty much not allowed. I mean, I guess what I'm trying to get at is there, I don't know about much crops here in Nevada, I could tell you about a lot of crops who grow in Texas, and we grow them all outside, we don't grow them inside of buildings, however, it is a lot drier climate here. But if there's a particular crop that somebody wants to grow outside, they would pretty much need to come before us for variants, if they didn't want to grow the crops within that, within an enclosed building.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, it's part of the definition, so it would not be allowed, you couldn't vary that, only indoor crops. One of the ideas behind urban farming in a desert environment is that most of the plants to be grown would be through a hydroponic system due to the fact that water is our limiting resource. We have plenty of sun, but water is our limiting resources, and through hydroponics, you use a lot less water for crops like wheat and corn, which need direct sunlight and don't grow very well indoors, even under grow lights. We don't expect that to be an urban farming item, but more of the hydroponic type plants.
And Mr. Chairman, so if, if someone come to us and wanted to build a greenhouse in the industrial district, would that be allowed?
Under this provision, it would. Currently, it is not permitted within the City of Las Vegas, you would not be allowed in an industrial zone to build a greenhouse to grow tomatoes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item number 37, TXT 53243, I'd make a motion, follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner, please vote. Motion to approve item 37 carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will go forward to city council in ordinance format.
Item number 38 is TXT 53408, the applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action to amend LVMC 19.12.070 to remove from the conditional regulations for the animal keeping and husbandry, use the restriction that horses may not be kept south of Cheyenne Avenue, and to provide for other related matters. Staff has no recommendations, staff may read the report, please.
Mr. Chairman, under the current provisions of Title 19, horses are not, are conditionally only allowed north of Cheyenne Avenue. If one wished to keep a horse south of Cheyenne, that would then require a special use permit. This text amendment would allow horses by condition, meaning those certain conditions for the keeping of the horses, south of Cheyenne, and no longer require the special use permit process.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Sure, good evening, and when you get up here, if you give us your name and address, please.
Gail Powers, 7385 West Verde Way, Las Vegas, 89149. Now technically, I live in the county, however, I've been involved in county government for a very long time concerning horses and ordinances allowing them to stay, keep wherever. I'm a little confused about this particular item that is coming before the city council. I got a phone call last night from somebody that was concerned about this, and asked me to come down and basically kind of find out what's going on. Are we going to change the, the fact that horses can be kept south of Cheyenne Avenue? And that was the other thing, too, what are the parameters? South of Cheyenne, is that from the west mountain to the east mountain? Where does the parameter stop on that? Because all it says is, is south of Cheyenne, Cheyenne goes all the way across the valley.
Thank you. I'll go, Director, if you want to answer this.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, through you. This is relative to the City of Las Vegas only, so it only applies to properties within the City of Las Vegas, south of Cheyenne.
All the way across the valley?
No, only within the City of Las Vegas.
Well, the City of Las Vegas goes from one end to the other in certain spots.
In certain spots, but only the areas of the City of Las Vegas, south of Cheyenne. There's other areas that are in the unincorporated county.
Right, I understand that.
And this does not apply to those.
I understand that, I understand. One area in particular that comes to mind is south of Cheyenne, between Michaelway and Jones Boulevard, and north of, give me a second. I can't think of the street name.
Alta.
No, 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 it's way further north than that, Smoke Ranch. That whole area right there is a lot of unincorporated, but there's also a huge community right in there that's a incorporated area of Las Vegas that actually has sold lots in there specifically for people that want to keep horses. Now, they're limited to two horses per lot all the way through there, and they have the riding arenas and whatever in that particular area, and this is going to affect them quite a bit. If you're going to reduce the numbers of horses allowed from, I believe city allows three, three horses per, per lot or per acre down to one.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond to that, this does not reduce the number of horses allowed.
Okay.
It doesn't change that.
Okay, what is it doing?
What is it doing is, our code right now requires a special use permit if you want horses south of Cheyenne.
Okay.
What is being proposed is it becomes a conditional use, meaning that you don't need to go to a public hearing and file an application if you meet certain requirements. The concern that we had in a couple of the wards in the city that are located south of Cheyenne is that there are certain properties that the owners feel that they have vested rights to horses, didn't want to have to go through the special use permit process to preserve those rights, and so that's why this ordinance is being generated, is to address those concerns.
So it's lightening up the requirements.
Correct.
Okay, that's, the way it was worded, nobody understood it, and I apologize, but they, they asked me, they said, "Go down, find out what's going on, and if it's, if it's something that's going to limit everything, then I was going to ask you to hold it over for 30 days so we could get people down here, get people aware of what's going on." Because I understand it was published in the newspaper, yeah, and I don't know about you guys, but I don't read the newspaper, I don't even watch the news.
Well, thank you.
Matter of fact, I didn't even know you guys moved. I had a hard time finding you, so forgive me.
All right, well, thank you very much, ma'am. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion or a motion amongst commissioners, Commissioner Sloman? I'm sorry, it looked like you were.
I'll make a motion, there's no other comments.
Please do.
I mean, one question, we have horses throughout the city in various locations that are on, that are part of homes, that they've always had horses in older neighborhoods. Then we've went to defining where horses would be because we wanted to deal with the trail system and where they're at, and we had all this public outcry against horse flies and odors and feces in the street and all of these things, and now we're swinging, this seems like we're in, we're in a period of time in the city right now where it's change for change sake rather than really solving a public need. The price of land south of Cheyenne is not going, getting any cheaper, the residential estates are already there. I mean, if we, we had a horse roundup that I missed, other than the one up in the Bundy Ranch, or, I'm really trying to figure out why this kind of consumes our day. Just a thought, and maybe that, the director answered that, but we've spent a fortune building trails for horses out north of Cheyenne, because that was where we wanted to encourage the horse population to go, and there were people that, south of Cheyenne still had horses, but why should we say, well, we spent all that money and that was kind of a nice, nice practice event or nice experiment, but now we've got a few people that want to have some right that they don't believe they've got now, and we're going to fix it by a code change that I'm not quite understanding what it fixes. So usually when you don't understand what something fixes, we'll make another problem out of it. Just my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other thoughts? I'll entertain a motion.
I just wanted to ask, Director, so you know, I live at Rancho there in Alta, and we're zoned horses, one acre per lot, so if I went and fired up a horse and built a corral, I could still have one?
If you meet the minimum standards relative to lot size, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sloman?
I, I'll make a motion on item number 38, TXT 53408, make a motion for approval.
Motion to approve item 38 carries.
Mr. Chairman, that will go forward to city council in ordinance format.
Thank you. Item 39, TXT 537. Item thirty-nine, TXT 53747. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas. For discussion and possible action to amend LVMC 19.04.010, Table Two, Sexually Oriented Business Conditional Use Regulation Six, to extend to eighteen months the period of time within which to obtain a building permit to reestablish and continue the use when a use has been discontinued under certain circumstances within the downtown centennial plan area. Staff has no recommendations. Staff, may we have the report, please?
The conditional use regulations listed in Title 19.12 for sexually oriented businesses, a business use prohibit the reestablishment of a sexually oriented business that is nonconforming due to distance separation requirements if the use is abandoned for a period of at least thirty days. This thirty-day period is significantly less than the period that is allowed for the reestablishment of other nonconforming uses, which are allowed up to twelve months to reestablish per Title 1914. The thirty-day period for reestablishing a nonconforming sexually oriented business uses does not apply in instances where the business is being expanded, enlarged, or altered. In those instances, the property owner has six months to attain a building permit, and all other construction activity must be completed before the permit expires if it's located within the downtown centennial plan. The proposed amendment would extend the period to obtain permits to expand, alter, enlarge sexually oriented uses from sixteen months to eighteen months, and would preclude foreclosure actions from consideration as abandonment of the use.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Mr. Truesdale?
I understand this one a little better, because we're not having horses out here that are sexually oriented, but.
You can probably move for Lemur South.
Lemur South. This one, I actually believe we're correcting a problem that, that potentially exists when businesses are forced or through one circumstances outside their control to, to go past the, the closure period, and, and I do support this item.
Thank you. Commissioner Boner?
Yeah, I, I remember a particular case that this relates to, and I thought it was a very unfair way to be treated, so this will correct that problem, and I will support the ordinance also.
Commissioner Sloman?
It, it's in the industrial district. It fits, it's right where all the other clubs are. Let it be. I support.
In the absence of any other comments, I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item number thirty-eight, carries.
And this item will go forward to City Council in ordinance form.
Going to our last item of the night, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Anybody wish to be heard on this from the public? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion. Any commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I just, on one of the items or a couple of items we voted on, I just, before my email gets going, I really want to tell people, I am a horse lover. I, I, I have nothing against horses, I'm just trying to figure out what we're doing on some of the changes we make, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, connectivity ratios, and looking at our urban sprawl plan earlier today, back in, going off the memory, back in 2002, we had an index of approximately eighty percent on our mixed-use properties, and that increased to somewhere around a hundred and five in 2014, and, which means that we made leaps and bounds with our mixed-use properties throughout the years. So that's good to see. But when we talk about connectivity ratios, and we're talking about the connectivity downtown and it's highly walkable, and then we talk about Hunt Ridge and it's semi-walkable, and then we talk about the areas out in the suburb, suburbs, and I forget the term we used, it's drivable. Car, car what? Car-dependent. So I do understand the connectivity when we have these little nodes that connect from a street at the back of a community that connects over to another major street where there's amenities such as a, a park or a, maybe a grocery store, or a gym, or something along those lines, but if we're connecting nodes to just other streets, if we want it to be walkable, walk down your driveway, walk out, walk around the community, get some exercise, I don't know. I, I still have a little bit of trouble with the connectivity on the smaller projects. The bigger projects, I, I can understand. On my particular property down, downtown on Fremont Street, we basically built seventy townhomes and built, or in the process of building seventy, and the connectivity for the people that live two blocks over are no longer connected up to Fremont, and they don't want to walk all the way around the community to get back to Fremont. So they created a, a new node that went straight through our property, they just jumped the fence and come, come through. So I, I do understand the connectivity, but sometimes on these smaller projects, I kind of can hear what the applicants have to say, and it doesn't always make sense to me to have a little node at the back of a property if it's a ten or fifteen, twenty in a community. That's my, my comments on connectivity, and I'll go ahead and be quiet so we can all go home.
All right. Commissioner Boner?
This is kind of a historic moment or time for me, but about thirty years ago exactly, I was promoting what some planning people called urban sprawl, and it happened to be what is today the community of Summerlin. I'd like to say the city of Las Vegas welcomed it where the county of Clark wasn't so kindly set to allow that sprawl to exist, for the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Goines?
I just wanted to wish Commissioner Quinn a happy birthday tomorrow.
Thanks, Byron.
I thought the fellows all get together and serenade her, but.
That's okay.
We'll do that on another day.
That's probably not good, to be on TV. All right, no further comments, this meeting's adjourned.